Good evening and welcome to the City of Laurel Planning Commission Meeting. This is our 608th meeting, a regular meeting, and for the first time in a while, it's nice to see everyone. We are here in an in-person meeting. If you would like to speak, please take the time to sign up on the right side, and during the public hearing, I will call on you. With that, we will start with the roll call. Ms. Quillan.
Council President Cole.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Mr. Kish.
Here.
Mr. Welford.
Here.
Mr. Grant.
Here.
Mr. Spalding.
Here.
Chairwoman Betman.
Here.
You have a call, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you. And for the record, I would just like to state and to thank Commissioner Rick Wilson. He is not here with us this evening. He is serving as an election judge for today's primaries. So I just wanted to let everyone know that it's not... Most of us are here anytime that we can be here. So, thank you, Rick, and thank you to all of the election judges that are out there today and that have been out for early voting. Moving on to Agenda Item 2, Approval of the Minutes from the April 9, 2024 Meeting. The minutes were circulated to all members. Are there any questions for staff? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 9, 2024 Meeting as presented from staff.
Madam Chair, I second that.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Welford.
Yes.
Mr. Kish.
Yes.
Mr. Grant.
Yes.
Mr. Spalding.
Yes.
Chairwoman Betman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, Forest Conservation Application and Resolution Number 24-04-PC 6902 Conti Road filed by Pulte Home Company, LLC. Included in this agenda item is a public hearing on the application and final action by the Planning Commission. Mr. Burrow.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow Planning Commissioners. This is Acting Director Monte Burrow. Staff will not be presenting tonight Forest Conservation Application and Preliminary Subdivision Plan. Due to the fact of inadvertent inconsistency and recent findings in the staff report as well as submitted documents from the applicant, staff would like more time to correct these issues. We know that this is last minute. We have informed the applicant. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. This is an important project for the city and also for the residents of Laurel. And while it might be disappointing to some, I appreciate the fact that the time is being taken to make sure that all of the information is available, both to the Commissioners, to the applicant, to city, and to residents. To everyone here and watching on television, I learned of this decision earlier today. Since we know the public notice had already been posted, we needed to call... to come here tonight. Based on the fact that the city will not be presenting a staff report to the Commissioners, the applicant will also not present tonight. In addition, the Commissioners will not be discussing this application nor making comments. However, those of you who took the time out of your schedule to attend tonight's meeting and plan to speak on these applications, and I'm speaking of both the Forest Conservation and the Preliminary Subdivision Plan, I will hold an open public hearing, and anyone still speak... wishing to speak can testify this evening. We have also received some written comments. Those comments will be included in the record. They will also be moved to the next meeting when this application will be discussed further. Following the public hearing, I will move to Table Agenda Items 3 and 4 until our next meeting, which is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, June 11. If you signed up to speak, I will call your name, and you will have two minutes to speak. If you prefer, you are welcome to hold your comments until the next meeting, or you're welcome to speak tonight, and if you choose, you're also welcome to speak again at the next meeting. At this time, at 6:05, I would like to open the public hearing. I will start calling those that had signed up in advance, then I will move to those that signed up this evening. Georgina Eithel. Is Georgina here? David Everett. Jimmy Rogers. Welcome. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jimmy Rogers.
He's going to set our timer for...
Sure, sure.
But we... You go ahead and...
Okay.
You just go ahead, please.
My name is Jimmy Rogers, and I live at 303 Sandy Spring Road. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your attention. The proposed forest retention plan for the Conti Road site to build corridor center is a contradiction in terms. Our city's master plan calls for more forest per capita than we have, and this development will leave residents of Laurel with less forest in the city limits. Of approximately 28 acres of forest on the site, only two will be kept in place, and those two acres will be broken into at least three pieces. Ecological function requires contiguous forests, not pockets. Effectively, there will be no upland forest in that area if this project moves forward as planned. Reforestation activities by construction companies are notorious for poor long-term care, and so I do not expect the proposed one acre of onsite reforestation to thrive. And even with perfect care, reforestation will not restore function within any of our lifetimes. Today, just among the red oaks on the site, there are trees that have stood for one to two centuries and could stand for more. Our Potuxent River is so full of silt and pollution, it inspired the Federal Clean Water Act. Forests are our best way... best tools to clean up our city's waterway by stabilizing land and filtering water. In almost 12... in mature... sorry. Place of forest... in place of mature forest, this development would add almost 12 acres of impervious surface. The idea that the remaining eight required forest retention acres will be reforested elsewhere and that that fulfills any responsibility to our residents or environment is laughable. If we must tear down a natural sound barrier next to I-95 to build high-cost homes, please require a plan that incorporates large trees into the architectural design to create a community with natural beauty and sharing the space with wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to continue with the list. I have passed some... I see one person has come in. After I go with those that have signed up, I'd like to just recap what we're doing for those that came in, but we'll wait for that. So Jonathan Haidt? Haidt? Well, is...
Haidt.
Thank you. Welcome, and if you'd state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jonathan Haidt. I live at 5 Riverview Court, Apartment 204 Laurel, Maryland, 20707. And I have no statement that I wish to make at this time, but I do have four points of information, and I would like the two minutes to be waived if I cannot make all four points.
And you can submit the... You can also submit those.
Okay. My points of information are, one, what is the proposed width and number of lanes for the Conti spur extending from Pirate Lane, where is the proposed egress and ingress for this development, to Van Duzen Street? The... I had the preliminary plan printed, and it is not evident on that plan. So that's point one. Point two, Pirate Lane is a through street from the Conti spur to Cherry Lane, but it is elided entirely in the traffic study, which is attached to the preliminary application, despite the fact that Pirate Lane will be directly opposite the ingress and egress from this development, which is the sole ingress and egress. Please explain this elision. Point three, the Forest Conservation Application document does not define the location for the proposed reforestation... for the proposed off-site reforestation. So please make this information available to the public in writing. And my point four is, on what basis is a one-acre space occupied by a pool, a clubhouse, and paving regarded as open area?
Thank you. Those are your four points?
Those are my four points.
Thank you. I believe I've copied them. I believe city has... If you have those in writing, would you mind give... because we can transcribe those.
I'm left-handed, and if you could read this, you'd be good at Sanskrit.
Okay. Well, what I'd like to make sure, and we have... is if you could leave your phone number with Brooke Quillan here, so that as we type those... because again, part of...
I'd be happy to.
Things that happen at a public hearing. We are not in a position to answer those, but you probably have some of the very same questions that we have, and that's what a public hearing is about, is to get the questions and also get you answers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, thank you for coming. Lana, L-A-N-A? Seyum Michael? Oh, could you please pronounce your name and tell me how?
Seyum Michael.
Seyum. Welcome. Well, welcome. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My first name is Seyum, S-E-Y-O-U-M. Last name is Michael, M-I-C-H-A-E-L. I'm at 7304 Dodington Court, Laurel, Maryland. So my biggest issue... So I'm a father of four kids. Prince George's County educated, still live here, still love Prince George's County, but it's getting harder and harder to educate our kids. And I think my kids right now... Two weeks ago, I had to pick them up from school because we did not have enough school buses to drop off, to pick up, to get our kids to school. To pick our kids up from school over here, too, as well. I think adding more houses is not going to make this any better situation right now. I mean, we're parents, and we're hurting in Prince George's County, and that's number one reason is because we are overpopulating these schools. These kids are in trailers right now, too, as well, if they can even find classes, if they could find teachers, too, as well. So I think before we think about adding more density to this area, we got to figure out what we're going to do for the families here right now. We've elected you guys to do this for us, right? We appreciate you guys immensely, or we wouldn't be here, too, as well. But as parents, as family, we're hurting right now in Prince George's County, and adding these houses right now is going to be the exact wrong thing to do for us, for the family right now. We're thinking about the next generation right now. This is absolutely not it. So we really appreciate you guys really thinking hard about the families that are really working hard and trying to make it Prince George's County our home and moving forward over here for us, too, as well. Thank you for everything that you guys do, too.
Thank you. Mr. Michael, the only point of clarification I would like to make is that, other than our Council President on the end...
Okay.
The rest of us here are volunteers, and we are citizens and residents of Laurel, just like you.
Absolutely.
So we're individuals and li... but like I say, and listening to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you're also ever interested, the city's always looking for more volunteers.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you for coming out.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to those that have signed up this evening. Bruce Land?
Yes.
Welcome. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Bruce Land, 9426 Northgate Road, Laurel. I'm a former head of the trustees of the First Baptist Church of Laurel, who's been in Laurel for now, what, 130-some years? I'm chairman... currently Chairman of the Christian Academy of Laurel School there, and my wife is a third-generation Laurelite. We've got people buried all around here. So as I look at the site plans, though, if they're removing 90% of the existing vegetation, that is going to more than triple the amount of stormwater runoff. Now, granted, they've got some ponds there that are going to capture some of that, but they can't contain all of that runoff. So I realize that, you know, they need... you want the construction. I realize this is something that's important to Laurel, but what's also important to me as a part of the church is that runoff is all going to come across our property. And so I want written assurance that my wetlands is not going to increase. Okay? You can run all these calculations you want. I'm an engineer by trade, 50 years at Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab, and I know that these give you good estimates, but I want assurance that my wetlands are not going to increase and impinge upon our ability for our church and our school to grow. And as you've just heard previous testimony, you certainly need some school growth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Haidt, you also signed in when you came in tonight. No problem. Joseph Ford, welcome. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Ford, representing, I guess, Laurel Church over at 7111 Cherry Lane. I just have a question, really, just about the sewage connection. How is the sewage going to be routed? Is it going to come extended from just outside of our Cherry Lane, down Cherry Lane, out to the development or down Conti?
Okay.
Just a question on that.
I will tell you that that will be answered in either the staff report or the reports that are currently online, but there will be a definitive answer for you.
Online?
Okay?
Okay.
Well, or at the... or at the next meeting.
Next meeting.
I'm not sure if those are online at this point with what's going on.
Yes.
But thank you for coming, and thank you for asking the question. Floro Crisolago? Welcome. If you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Floro Crisolago. I live in 7307 Dodington Court, Sam's neighbor. So we're pretty near where the area, Cherry Lane, is going to be at, and some of the concerns that our neighbors in that area have is that congestion, traffic. As it is right now, we have speeding cars coming from one end to another. I'm trying to catch the light, and it's always a hazard. And that area for the school buses is sort of a congestion point. So as a matter of public safety, I just want to make sure that that's also taken into consideration. Another thing is with the added... I got this pamphlet somewhere. Is it 302 houses?
That is the current... that was the current report coming into tonight.
Correct, yeah. Yeah. So then I would expect that school population, class per size capita would also increase, so then education will also be impacted, you know? And one... Another point is that I was at a meeting last week with our HOA, and Mayor Cinder was there and the Chief of Police, and there were some questions that were brought up there as well. For every increase in population, a certain resource allocation for police is added. So it's like, okay, so depending on... There's a calculation.
Correct.
So the other concern is that they would need to add more resources, and when it was asked, what would be the cost and how would it be paid for? It would be taxes. So is that a study or... or a idea of how much that would impact the people? And that's about it.
Thank you very much. Okay, that is all that I have currently signed up.
Madam Chair, Mr. Everett is here.
Yep. That's who I knew I saw come in. But however, I will call on you. However, what I wanted to restate for those of you that came in while the public hearing was going on, Agenda Item 3, the Forest Conservation Plan, when I called on staff to report out on that, we were advised by staff that they would not be presenting that report tonight due to some findings in the staff report and all of that. And based on the fact that the staff report would not be presented, the applicant was notified. This is all things that I learned earlier this... earlier today, about noon today. The fact that staff would not be presenting, the applicant would not be presenting. And the third thing, based on the fact that the staff would not be reporting, the applicant would not be reporting, the Commissioners will not be interacting and asking our questions of staff and the applicant. However, because there was public notice given of this meeting, we wanted to make sure that we did have the public hearing, and so anyone wishing to speak can speak. Those that submitted written comments for the record, those will be entered into the record, and they will be moved forward to the next meeting. So just making sure, bringing everyone up to speak. I'd like to now call on David Everett. Welcome. If you would state your name and address for the record, please. And two minutes. I'm sorry, we've been... That was the other thing that was stated. Thank you.
Okay. David Everett, 1110 Montgomery Street, Laurel. Just some observations. I've already heard some folks hit some of the topics. I looked through the traffic study. It addresses intersections. It doesn't address road size, and so that's clearly an omission, given the one and a half lane, if being generous, roads that feed into the road, to the entrance of the facility. So the forest plan ought to include the trees that need to be taken down in order to widen the roads to access, and so that ought to be part of the trees that we're counting that are being taken down for this development. The stormwater was brought up, not only at the church, but just a little bit downstream of there. You know, there's townhouses and other places that are very close to a slightly lower elevation ground that carries the stormwater. It's fine when there's a forest there, but when you have impervious surfaces, you're going to have a problem. And, you know, we know from Ellicott City, you know, the climate is changing and, you know, strict use of numbers from, you know, a decade ago aren't necessarily valid. You need to make sure you're anticipating how much worse things are going to get. So, you know, that's part of the sustainability. The other thing to consider is how do people, you know... Can people who live there walk anywhere? And, you know, is there a possibility to get a bike path maybe out to the edge of 198 and down along 198?
Thank you very much. Is Georgina Eithel? Lena Matovic? Is there anyone else wishing to speak that has not signed up? Welcome.
There are a couple people who signed up more recently back there.
Thank you very much. Stanley, would you mind going and getting the last sign-up sheet? I thank you very much. Oh, oops, I'm sorry. I think it's here.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's okay, but thank you. Welcome. If you would state your name and address for the record.
Michael Maxwell, 14716 Exbury Lane. I printed out a map here. If I could distribute that with...
If you can pass one... How many do you have?
Oh, 10 copies.
Okay. If you could make sure that they get a copy, we'll leave you one here. Oops, I'm sorry, Dennis.
You've heard a few ideas about why this is not a good idea to develop this area as high-density housing. I'd like to offer an alternative for what could be done with that area. The alternative is to make it into a parkland, maybe put some trails through it. The map there that I've given you outlines the area in red, approximate area, and I've taken the liberty of calling it Pulte Park on the assumption that Pulte would be nice enough to sell the land at a reasonable cost to the city, and we can name it after them in their honor if we'd like. I've also indicated on the map with blue lines an existing green space area. By the way, I don't see any numbers on my timer here, so I just take as much time as I want.
No, we'll start you now. Keep going. Go ahead.
Okay. And then there's some pink areas in there that would be possible trail corridors. So the idea that I have is not only to make this area a park, and that of course requires some funding through grants, probably, but also to make a corridor from the existing green land space over at Laurel Lakes through the bottom land there by Bear Branch and up through one of the two or both of the two corridor areas up to this new park, making it an area that people can use for hiking, biking, trail running, whatever, and make it... make Laurel not just a place where more people can live, which is what this development would do, but make it a better place for people to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Heidi Hess-Weber?
I'm... I work at Laurel Elementary School.
I'm...
Sorry.
Excuse me.
Heidi Hess-Weber, and I live at 323 Compton Avenue.
Thank you. Welcome.
And I work at Laurel Elementary School with kids age four through 12. I'm there because I care about what happens to children. I care about their lives now, and I care about what their lives are going to become as adults. It's with these children and with my brand-new grandbaby in mind that I'm here to talk to you today. I understand... I understand that our city wants to increase income from additional housing. I understand that Pulte wants to maximize their profits from the purchase of this forested plot of land. I understand that many people believe we have a housing shortage. I'm not one of them, but I understand people believe that. But commissioners, if we don't begin to consider the impact of our decisions as individuals, as organizations, as businesses, and as communities, we are participating in the destruction of our way of life. If we're not part of the solution, we're part of the problem. No exceptions. Imagine the loss of habitat when an entire forest is clear-cut to make room for houses. We've got 80% of our monarch butterflies are gone on the planet because of loss of habitat. We lose birds. We lose all manner of animals that are important to our sustenance on this planet. Imagine the pollution and the runoff from all those houses and cars that are driving into that neighborhood to the, the neighborhoods downstream. And imagine all the CO2 that's not going to be absorbed from the atmosphere because all those trees are gone. At what point do we decide that we are willing to forego some of the profits in order to take a stand for a healthier city and county, country, world? I believe that, okay, I'll stop.
Go ahead, finish your sentence.
Well, what I was going to say is I believe that what we have in this country is bubbles of environmentally healthy and committed areas, and that if we can grow our bubbles so that they connect and they become bigger bubbles, that's the way we create a healthier environment. And I want to see Laurel be a bubble.
Thank you. I noticed that you had typed notes. If you didn't finish those notes, if you would like to submit them, we can enter them into the record.
Okay. Thank you.
If you would like to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming, and you can give those to Brooke Quillan if you like. Jimmy Rogers?
Very well.
Oh, I'm sorry. How quick I.
Quick.
Having trouble with 7330 Breckenridge Street? I'm sorry, I could not read your name. I apologize. We'll wait till you get, thank you very much, and welcome if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Welcome to the council. I'm Martha E. Gonzalez-Pineiro. My address is 7330 Breckenridge Street, Laurel, Maryland 20707. Why am I here? I'm not prepared to give you a really note, but I'm here because my friends, my, my first friend lived in Laurel for almost, had been here in Laurel for almost 30 years, and it would give me the opportunity to buy a house here in Laurel as a first buyer when the market crashed. When those houses from Craftmark was not being sold, not even done, I got the opportunity to be a first buyer. I'm a Hispanic. I live by myself, so I'm a woman that has worked her way from the down up to the top. And when I moved there, it was a great community for people with their children, and they were enjoying our community. But the past, past two or three years, I have seen Breckenridge Street being sold out. Most of all my neighbors that were in Breckenridge Street, at least some of them, had sold their houses, believing that they can get a better price and buy another home better and affordable. The real deal is that if you buy, that you sell your house high in this moment, you're going to buy high also. The problem is that I'm the only one that have been there for almost 11 years, and I love my place. Pulte is a home construction that builds houses for mansions. They're located almost Potomac, almost Potomac Hill was built by Pulte. I'm from Puerto Rico, and they build houses too in Pulte, and they were not really for the middle class or the lower class. There's stipulations that we're supposed to be including lower income in their provisions to build us, but really, that, the road where they are is our, almost our safety road, because if something happens in Cherry Lane, the only way we're going to get out is through Conti.
Correct.
So, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If you would like to submit additional comments, you're welcome to. And thank you. And some of the information that you were looking for will also be online in staff reports and also the developers' presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Already signed? I believe I have covered all of the written names. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing no one ready to speak, or no one additional to speak, I will close At this time, I move to table the Forest Conservation Application and Resolution to our June 11, 2024 meeting. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kish. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Chairwoman, Bettman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, I move to table the Preliminary Subdivision Plan and Resolution Number 956 to our June 11, 2024 meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Kish. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Chairwoman, Bettman?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And to all of you that came out, and also to the applicant who is also here, I thank you all for your comments. I encourage you to stay participative in this process. Follow online with updated reports and maps, and if you have any questions, contact our Community Economic Development Group, and we look forward to seeing you on June 11. I thank you very much. You are welcome to stay, or, no, we only have one other agenda item, but you are also free to leave. Please know that. I just wanted to make sure you knew. You do not have to sit through the rest. You're welcome to stay, and, but again, thank you for your participation. Just give a brief pause here. Okay, if you are not staying for the rest, if I could ask you to step outside and continue your conversations. Again, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, Planning Annual Report and Resolution Number 24-05-PC. Mr. Burrow?
Good evening again, Madam Chair and fellow planning commissioners. Under Section 1, 207B of the Land Use Article requires that the planning commission shall prepare, adopt, and file an annual report for the previous calendar year with the local legislative body. For the year 2023, the City of Laurel issued 183 new residential permits. We anticipate this trend to continue with the continued construction of Protection Green, West Side, and Anderson Green. We also believe there will be minor updates to the Unified Land Development Code, and will continue the process for the 2026 Master Plan Update. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number 2405-PC, which will then be filed with the planning, I mean, the Maryland Department of Planning. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Burrow. Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I will move to approve the planning annual report as presented and also the Resolution Number 24-05-PC.
Do I have a second?
I will second that, Madam.
Thank you. Ms. Quillan, if you would please call the roll.
Mr. Welford?
Yes.
Mr. Kish?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Spalding?
Yes.
Chairwoman, Bettman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Having no further business, this meeting is adjourned.